Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, August 7th Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting to order. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During this moment of silence, I would like to offer our condolences to the Whitson family for the loss of Mr. Whitson's father, Robert. Thank you. And just to let everyone know, Mr. Whitson has joined us by Zoom for personal reasons and location is New Jersey, I believe.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
If that's the motion, I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I just would like to call out the signed ordinance discussion that's on the afternoon agenda. I think as a matter of tradition, all land use matters are typically on the evening agenda. And I understand that there may be a need and a want for an opportunity for discussion ahead of time, but I just don't think that's a good habit to fall into.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll move into presentations. Dr. Grimsley, welcome back.
Good afternoon. It's been a while. Missed you guys. So much has happened since my last report. We are returning to school after a very successful summer. Activities included summer school, terrific Thursday camp, Fun in the Sun Day Camp, Pathways Academy, Band Camp, Summer Quest, and more. We're very busy, all this while we underwent one of the most large-scale comprehensive facilities updates the school has seen in recent history, thanks to that $1 million infusion of capital funds that came through in the FY '23 budget. So hopefully you'll get a chance to come and see some of these updates. It looks fantastic. We are gearing up to start school this week. Much has been done in preparation for the return of staff and students, and we are optimistic that this school year will be the best year ever as we continue on the journey to the road to Remarkable. Last week, we welcomed our new teachers and staff to Rappahannock County Schools. New teachers, as is customary, underwent a two-day orientation to acclimate them to RCPS as well as provide essential training to begin the year. They spent time with mentors who introduced them to essential knowledge about RCPS as well as established a support system for our new teachers and staff. All teachers and staff returned last Wednesday for convocation at RCHS, followed by a very busy back-to-school schedule with essential staff development, much focused on instruction as we work to close academic and behavioral gaps widening as a result of the pandemic. While we are dealing with significant challenges presented by two and a half years of dealing with a global pandemic, I am so thrilled to report that our preliminary SOL test results and other academic indicators show that our students have made huge progress this year, this past year, far exceeding expectations from the state level and earning RCPS full accreditation without any conditions again, even with the changing standards from the state. So thank you again for your unwavering support in helping make this happen. Additional good news, our enrollment is up. We have a large kindergarten class, our preschool programs are bursting at the seams, returning and new enrollees that were previous homeschool families, and an increase in our non-resident requests for enrollment, all resulting in a new enrollment of 804 students, where the state had projected us at about 660. Yes. So we will look forward to the additional state revenue these new enrollment numbers will bring this year during budget development. Meet the Teacher Night is tonight, partially. We did have to cancel our five to seven due to the threat of severe weather and wanted to be sure families and staff were able to get out before the really dangerous stuff starts hitting around five. That's what our recent information has. So hopefully people can still feel free and stop in, say hello to our teachers, and see some of those amazing updates to our facilities. Tomorrow, eighth grade orientation will now be at 3:30. It was supposed to be this evening. For those who can't make it, there will be a special event for the first day of school for those students at the high school. And those who missed out, including myself, my own call messed up my schedule for tonight too, but teachers will be taking appointments and things as they are able for tomorrow during work hours. But regardless, we'll make sure that all those students get to where they need to go and are very happy on the first day of school. Also, backed by popular demand, is our monthly calendar of events, which was included on my update on Board Docs. We encourage you to make appearances and come support RCPS. The calendar is there. And as always, thank you so much for your continuous support of the school system. We would not be nearly as successful as we are without that support. So thank you so much. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. Thanks, Shannon. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
So I think I read somewhere that out-of-county families is up by 100% or something like that? It went from like 28 to 53 or something?
20 to 53. Sounds about right. Yep.
So my question is, is do any of those kids have anything to do with the pre-K and the K bursting at the seams, or is that Rappahannock?
No, in fact, those are the two areas where I've actually had to turn down those applications because it's only by available seats. So if we have too many in that cohort, then they can't come.
Wow.
And pre-K is a little bit different, too. State funding formula works different. We do not receive ADM funding for our regular VP or regular preschool students. You only receive state funding for Virginia Preschool Initiative eligible families. So that's a little bit different, too.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I look forward to seeing the new kitchen. We did a lot of work in that, I hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. It looks great, the new culinary kitchen. Yep.
Wonderful. Mr. Whitson, anything?
I know, I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Best of luck for the new school year.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Next, under Presentations, we have the employee recognition. And Mr. Curry will help me.
Yes, this is, we try to recognize long-tenured staff annually on their five-year, 10, 15, et cetera. And I'm not sure if all staff have managed to make it here, but we'll go through and make sure we recognize. For me, Sam is our building official. Thank Rich for his service. This person.
Oh, my goodness. Gary Curry Jr., dedicated service of five years for Rappahannock County Managed Citizens. I bet it feels like 10, but everything you've done, hopefully everybody will give.
The COVID blubber. Gary Jenkins Jr., five years. Gary's a dispatcher. My first introduction to Gary was through the radio brand that he really shepherded through as a representative from the Volunteer Fire Rescue Association. So Gary, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, sir.
David Mead. I met David as a dispatcher, and he's since gone through the academy and moved on to the road. And I know he's a thorn in the side of many people.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Crystal Corris. Things started the same day or end of the day. He performed for me.
Same day.
Five years ago. Congratulations, Crystal. Still don't put up with me for five years. Supervisor Smith.
Oh, my goodness. It was good things happening, five years.
I remember being in the clerk's office as we were getting, taking care of our certainty, and I was there, I met your mother.
And I remember meeting you at your last interview, Gary.
And again, Ms. Summers, Michelle Summers, five years. It's not here, she's listening in front of her office, CR Zoom. Thank you, Michelle, for five years. That's in that office building zoning. We've got one long-tenured employee and two five-years, so it's exciting to have this folks onboard. Seven five-year employees. Then we move on to Crystal Jenkins. Ten years. The dispatcher, the theme, Don Kestner. Fifteen years of service. Deputy Uben, also 15 years. I have no idea if he's ever worked in dispatch. He can let us know. Only women. It's a pretty neat name. Twenty years, Lieutenant Janie Jenkins.
And the most positive person, I think, I've met.
I understand this person also started in dispatch 35 years ago. Sheriff Connie Compton.
No trip to La Ruta?
Thank you all very much.
All right. Now we're on to the recognition of Treasurer and Treasurer's Office.
Put a note on the door.
They earned accreditation from the Treasurers Association of Virginia, and it's a voluntary program, which gave it Deputy Treasurer Lisa Dotson and Deputy Treasurer Dawn Dotson all dedicated extra time to get through this accreditation process. And the quote that came from Michael Stevens, President of the Treasurers Association of Virginia, reports that offices achieving this accreditation exemplify the highest standards of excellence and integrity measured by our association. Further, Mr. Stevens praised the hard work and dedication it took for each of them to achieve this special designation. If you don't mind standing, I'd love to give you a round of applause. All right. Next on the Presentations is the Company Four Monthly Report to the Board and Community.
Thank you, Chairwoman Donahue.
Yes, sir.
My name is Hugh Hill, and the first thing to say is.
You might want to wait a second.
A pause.
Okay.
Now I know why all the deputies were here. The first thing to say is why I'm standing up here instead of Chief Gerald. I think all of you know that he resigned a week ago. I have the statement that we passed around and all signed off on, the remaining four directors, but I think it's been in Board Docs and it's certainly on our website. Would you have me read it into the record, or do you want it just assumed everybody knows it?
Maybe it would be nice.
All right. Thank you. The Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company announces the resignation of Chief David Gerald. Mr. Gerald resigned for his own reasons, which we are confident are good and sufficient. We want to commend and express our gratitude to Mr. Gerald for his incredibly extensive efforts to rehabilitate Company Four. The remaining county-appointed directors of Company Four are reassessing our revitalization plan and are working closely with the county to ensure that we can maintain forward momentum in this effort. To that end, we are in the process of onboarding an enthusiastic, large cadre of volunteers who have stepped forward to become members and fill the many critical roles essential to continuing the legacy of Flint Hill Volunteer Fire Company's service to the Rappahannock community. Thank you for your ongoing support as we navigate the path to returning Company Four to full strength. Now, as Chief Gerald would do, I can report to you on calls that we had last month as part of the monthly report. There were 21 EMS calls that were responded to, three fire calls that were responded to, and there were three EMS calls that we did not respond to. But there were seven different people who responded to the EMS calls in July, as opposed to only two in June. And I think that reflects some success that we've had in training, onboarding, getting people certified. We have three more trainings scheduled. One more is being planned. And at the recommendation of the county EMS coordinator, we're going to discuss whether and when to have regular monthly trainings that we will be offering members and other companies in the region, in our county. So we are in a situation where we can only discuss things, but one of the things that we are discussing is possibly asking this board to appoint one or more directors to replace Chief Gerald and bring us back up to a full complement. It's brief. That's all I've got. If there are questions, I'll try to answer, but just found out a week ago I'd be doing this, so I'm not as up on it as David Gerald was.
I just have a question on logistics.
Yes, sir.
If I could. You said that you had seven people respond to the EMS calls, and that was a result of training. What kind of training could they receive in a month's time to start running EMS calls?
Well, they had it before that, but they not only had to have the training, I'll get directly there, but a little roundabout. They had to have the training, and then they had to have their certification issued, right? And then they had to be signed off by the chief to be able to. So, for example, as an emergency physician, I couldn't go out on the ambulance until I had passed a basic life support course, which I did, I think, in May, but the paperwork and so forth didn't come through, and I wasn't able to go out on the ambulance and help until July. So logistics-wise, it's kind of fruition of some trainings that we had in being able to get people involved. Is that responsive?
But I think EVOC is the primary training, so being able to drive the emergency vehicle and then having a BLSCPR together with that, which is an association policy.
Right, but there were no EMTs or anyone that could actually run the call?
We, no, we don't have EMTs right now. We've got people interested, and we're working on scheduling a class in the next couple of months to start to get EMTs in place and trained up. I will volunteer that we've been talking with Company Nine, and Chief Todd Brown from Company Nine has been incredibly generous, and his board have been generous in saying they would help in any way they can with training and getting people geared up. So we're hopeful about that relationship possibly leading to more people trained.
Yeah, I took the EMT training years ago at Flint Hill twice, two different four-year periods.
Great.
So it'd be great to see Flint Hill back in the training.
We very much want to do that, sir. As opposed to the fire, we've got the added hurdle of not only gearing up, but making sure the reporting is in place and all the things that weren't being done before so that the medical director for our jurisdiction will sign off on our getting our license back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you all very much.
Wish you the best.
Can we take a brief recess, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Brief recess. This time, we move into public comment. Ready? Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. Keep in mind that the signed ordinance public hearing will be either this evening or postponed until Wednesday. We're going to make that decision based on the weather. So today is strictly public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized, come up and give us your name and the district you're in, and let us know what you have to say.
My name is Sam Paulback, Indian Wakeville District. Listening to Mr. Hill here talk, they've run quite a few calls in Flint Hill, yes. The analyst has been researchered on the Rappahannock's license, yes. They've run 81 calls and they had no transports. They have run in the middle of the night as far as down in Slate Mills. There's four other ambulance companies that should have been responding to Flint Hill. Now we have Gerald gone. He's the one that's run probably 80 to maybe 90% of the calls that he's been on. So who's going to take over and run the calls because they have nobody certified now? We've got the back row back here, including myself, has 200 years' worth of experience and training right there. Just been pushed out of the fire department and said, we can't run calls, we can't, we don't even know if we're members or not anymore because we don't go to meetings. We're kind of pushed off to the side. So it's a big concern now what's going to happen in Flint Hill. Is the fire department going to be dissolved because they don't have anybody run the calls? In six months, EMTs, maybe. In six months, maybe four, five to ones, maybe. A chief coming from another department that runs, sending files into his calls in Warren County is not going to be there to guide anybody. So again, you jumped out of the pan now into the fire. You've made things worse instead of better, in my opinion.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Patrick Monney, Executive Director with the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission, speaking to an item on your consent agenda, 50th anniversary resolution for my organization. Want to thank the board for considering that as part of the consent agenda. And just a couple of quick comments about the history. Rappahannock County was one of four charter members of the regional commission. In 1973, the first meeting was in January in Culpeper, along with the town of Warrenton, Falkir County, and Orange County. Mr. Robert Anderson and J. Newbill Miller were the first two appointees that served from the county to the commission. And we've got four members from the county that spent over 10 years. Mr. Anderson spent more than 23 years in total in service to the commission, including, I think, as I was staff member, maybe the first six years of my time overlapped with Mr. Anderson being on our board. Colonel E.P. Luke, 18 years total on the commission. Former county administrator John McCarthy, 21 years. And former chairman Roger Welch, 10 years. My records tell me that Mr. Fraser, Ms. Smith, who I worked with, Ms. Donahue have all served from the Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Curry, soon after his five years ago appointed as county administrator, was also appointed to the commission. So I thank all of you for your service over that time. And going around a couple of the other counties, Rappahannock has had 16 members in 50 years. I think that speaks to people being appointed to the commission and caring about it and staying on a long time. And it's really only with the support of you all at the county level and our member towns that we've been able to make it to 50 years and hopefully for 50 more after this one. So again, thank you for your consideration during consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your assistance and willingness to help. Anyone else's public comment in the building?
Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. A lot of people are a lot more eloquent than I am, so I'm going to let them address tons of the issues that are going on. But I think every once in a while, you sort of need a little bit of joy or fun. So, you know, those little rocks that have appeared around the county with different phrases and everything. And one time, I brought a little block that said "A" for attitude. So I figured some kind of a little word or phrase everybody might sort of enjoy having somewhere on a bookshelf. So I did that.
I thought you might be throwing them.
No rotten tomatoes. And these are, so this is wisdom.
I still have my pencil that told me to take a nap. I keep that for such occasions.
Kindness. This is steadfast. And here is, not here, but I have courage for him, and I have positive for this time. And I have ungauntred for Gary. And I have thorough for art. And I have hope for you. Everybody gets a present. I'll be glad.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you very much.
I'll keep it.
Thanks, Sheila. That's super sweet. Thank you.
Mr. Deakins.
Good afternoon. Deke Deekins, Stonewall Hawthorne, here in opposition to the proposed increase in the food tax. I'm a fledgling owner of a burgeoning ice cream shop in Sprigle, and I've entered, after 50 years of being a building contractor, I've entered into the world of pennies. And the 2% increase translates into pennies. And so I'm trying to keep the ice cream cost to a minimum, and I just urge you to seek another alternative. Thank you.
It's good ice cream.
Appreciate your support.
Yes, ma'am.
There's no hearings. The public comment is appropriate.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Yoko Barsky, and I live in Hampton District. Reading the Rappahannock News that was published on July 27th, I was quite surprised at some of supervisors' comments on the courthouse project. Yes, the focus of the project is a courthouse, but we need to keep in mind that the whole project actually involves all the county-owned buildings, all the offices, every employee, and that eventually affects every Rappahannock County resident. So that is a tremendous project that they are undertaking. Following the directions that were set forth by this board in January of 2022, the Building Committee has been tirelessly and diligently working with the county administration and employees and the project architect. With my personal interest as an architect, I have attended many of these meetings. The committee initially analyzed the existing unforeseeable problems, various codes, state regulations, courts, space and legal requirements, comparative costs, available sites, and so on. They also obtained a study report of the deteriorating conditions of each of the existing historical buildings. I am glad that the county has finally hired an experienced architect specialized in historical building preservation. It is a very unique field. These careful analyses led to the conclusion that building a new courthouse is much more effective cost and time-wise, and less disturbance to businesses than any other options they looked at. The committee also recommended that all the existing historical buildings, despite all the deterioration and the deficiencies, were to be restored, renovated, and then reutilized. This is a direction approved and set forth by this board a year and a half ago and was much applauded by the residents. I'd like to thank the Building Committee members, the project architect, and Mr. Curry for bringing this project up to the stage of preliminary conceptual design. It was very encouraging to receive endorsements for the new courthouse concept and layout from the current and the former county and Commonwealth attorneys at the September 2022 joint meeting. Once this preliminary design is approved by this board, the architect can start the next stage of designing the actual courthouse building, along with the sites, stormwater actual courthouse building along with the sites, stormwater management, and everything that comes along with it. The exterior facade design seems to be the concern by many residents. It will be part of the next design stage. The members of the board, please help educate the public of this complex but crucially important and necessary project for the Rappahannock County. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Catherine Ishipidmont. I realize there's going to be a hearing this evening on the sign ordinance, so I'm just going to make this very brief because I see that you have a discussion on the agenda this afternoon of it. Again, much appreciation to our county staff for all the work they've put into this with their otherwise very busy schedules. And they put up on the board doxa a highlight of what the amendment means or what the proposal would mean. And I just wanted to offer two quick clarifications on that. Actually, not clarifications, but just highlights on that. One, I don't disagree with the statement in there that billboards are still prohibited. If by that one means that some billboards are still prohibited. The current definition of billboard has been taken over into the new proposal, not quite verbatim, but just about. And it's now off-premises signs. So some off-premises signs that are going to be allowed under the proposal are billboards as defined currently. They're small, but they're billboards. And the other clarification is that when the carve-out for art was put into the ordinance originally, that was with, at least on some of our part, with the intent that there would be an adjoining art ordinance on that. So that when you carved out art from the definition of signs, it would be taken care of in a subsequent ordinance or a sister ordinance, if you will. That has not been done. So the carve-out for art just stands on its own as a very large carve-out. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Not seeing anyone else in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during public comment, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. I expect Zoom hand will be added to Wikipedia at some point. All right. Not seeing anyone on Zoom wishing to speak. I will close public comment, which takes us to the consent agenda.
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented if no one has any changes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Many thanks to Mr. Moni for all he does on behalf of the people of Rappahannock County.
Absolutely. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right. Appointments? I don't think we have any.
Just a quick update. Mr. Alex Sharp tendered his resignation to the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority. Based on your policy that vacancy has been advertised in the local paper and noted that it's open until filled with the first opportunity for appointment being today, we've received no applications so far. So talk to your community about those who might be interested in joining that body.
If y'all are willing to waive the formalities, I am willing to serve at least on a temporary basis until a permanent appointment can be found. I've attended many of the meetings recently, and there's a lot going on that I need to be involved with. And I'd be happy to serve if that helps the authority. And I think the members of this board to stay abreast of important issues as well.
Are you putting yourself as a motion?
I guess very modestly, yes, I'm making a motion to appoint, or I'm saying I'm willing to serve if someone is willing to appoint me.
I'd be willing to second that. I mean, we've got precedent for that supervisor S to serve for a number of years on the Water and Sewer Authority.
Given that we don't have anybody putting in their application yet, I do agree it would be nice to get an update.
There's a lot going on.
Just for, if I could, just interject one more time. I mean, it's, it's very longstanding habit in Falkir County, they appoint their former supervisors, at least. I think it was always a majority of former supervisors on their WSA board. So that there would be continuity of plans always going forward, you know, that the WSA knew what the supervisors were, were planning. They all work together. We really haven't had that here.
So is that a second or?
That's a second.
Mr. Fraser was a second.
And before we move much further, because you haven't filled out an application, maybe you just tack on.
Yes, I was going to ask, do we need to, we have all the informalities associated there with?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And was the motion including a temporary basis meaning that we'd continue advertising for?
I don't know that we need to continue to advertise. I think everyone's aware of what we need. We really need a grant writer on the Water and Sewer Authority. So I would just talk to people that you know that write grants.
I would prefer to keep advertising it as I've talked to a number of Water and Sewer Authority members, and they're really looking for somebody that's got engineering background. So if we wanted to increase the number of members on there, I'd be open to that. But I think that they've hit a real stride with having the last placement in Mr. Lloyd, who has a ton of experience. And I think that they saw the huge benefit in that. So when I spoke to the members that I spoke to, they were really keen on getting someone with an engineering background. So that's what I would be in favor of, is continuing to advertise it. Or if you wanted to, as Mr. Fraser's point was, having a BOS member on there just increased the, what is it, five now?
It's five. It's a little more complicated because there's an ordinance in place and we, you have to amend that in order to increase the number. But it's possible.
So you're okay with temporary and until?
Yeah. But I would prefer to keep advertising.
It just costs money to advertise.
I think getting the right people in the right spot is the goal for me, at least.
Ms. Smith made a motion that she would step up temporarily for the Water and Sewer Authority until if we find the right person comes up.
Okay, so am I correct then? And thank you, Ms. Smith, for stepping up. So you're offering to fill that, fill that seat until, until we look at other applicants and maybe find a permanent appointee?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Moving into old business. Is this when we do the joint with the building committee?
Well, you do have the agenda item for action relative to company four if needed. So it would be appropriate to state that that is either needed or not needed.
Okay. At this point, I am going to recommend that we pull the resolution in speaking with Chief Brown, who is very open to helping and be kind of an operational manager of the company. He found out when he read his bylaws that he can only be acting at one company at one time. So I'm going to pull that resolution. He's still very engaged. And hopefully, we can find a director number one and help the company continue.
This may be the proper place to say it, but I was here in one of the hearings in front of Judge Plowman, and he said that, that of course, company four had to follow their bylaws. So I believe their bylaws say that the membership has to appoint the chief.
We appointed them through the resolution.
I know what this board did, and that was litigation as a result. But Judge Plowman sat right there and told the attorneys and everyone in this room that of course, they have to follow the bylaws. So I think this board needs to remember that. I don't see how the two are compatible where a judge says that they have to follow the bylaws and then this board later wants to continue down a path of violating those bylaws. That's what the judge said.
I think the entire case was around the interplay between Code of Virginia, Title 27, and the bylaws.
I understand all that. I understand all that. But I heard what the judge said, and it's still probably in litigation. I don't think that we need to keep continuing down that road after hearing what a judge said about bylaws of a Virginia corporation.
Okay, so are we, as Chair Donahue, Mr. Fraser proposes any action right now that the board is asked to talk about this? Or are you just saying it as a addition to this discussion? I mean, I don't, I don't know what we're, what, if anything, trying to resolve right now.
It's just a point of order. I'm just making a cautionary statement to this body that we've already had one circuit court judge state from the bench that of course, company four has to follow the bylaws. And I would imagine that that would mean this board as well, that we would not violate that. And I think that, you know, we're on very dangerous ground if we move forward after hearing something like that from a sitting judge in this circuit. He wasn't a temporary judge. He wasn't a substitute judge. He's a judge of the 20th Circuit, of which Rappahannock is a member of.
Has there been any feedback from the Virginia State Police about the investigation that we were told would be concluding in March? What did they say?
It was, especially with.
Colton.
Yeah. He found that there was gross financial mismanagement, but that he did not feel, other than there's a few instances of misuse of a card, that it rose to the level of criminal charge. And I reviewed it very carefully with him and agreed with him that criminal charges were not warranted. And I declined to prosecute any of those ones that were, what I would call, marginal. But his conclusion was simply that there was gross financial mismanagement that apparently had been remedied by some procedures that were put in place even by the prior set of officers. It's just as simple as using an electronic check account.
That's great.
And in a detailed manner, the expenditure.
Similar, similar to what the county had a couple of years ago, gross mismanagement of the use of the credit card.
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, all I can say, I don't recall any of that. But as far as the Virginia State Police investigation of company four, it's concluded.
Very good. I really do appreciate the update. Thank you, Art.
All right. I had left it with dropping the resolution from the agenda. We've heard from Mr. Fraser, which I agree, we've got to stay out of court. And I think we can move on at this point to the building committee joint building meeting.
Okay, I think Chairman of the Building Committee will call the building committee to really, really commit part of this meeting to order. I believe we have a quorum. I don't I guess, I'm not really sure at this point how to proceed after reading the article. I just wonder if all the board members were properly quoted in that article that was in the Rappahannock News.
I'll say, I'll say publicly for the record, I was absolutely quoted accurately in that article. If you remember when we voted, I don't know when it was, I've lost track of time to last year, but when we, when we voted to, because members of the committee asked for direction, I was very clear that I did not support the idea of building a new courthouse, building, and that it all we ought to work with, what we have. I mean, we're a county of 7,300 people. It was a county of 7,300 people over 100 years ago. And I would say it was zero population growth in a not particularly complex county political or legal landscape. The idea of building a large new building and not working with a resort, one seemed to be, at least in my view, of far reach and probably unnecessary. And that's not to take anything away from the need for courthouse security, et cetera. That said, I was outvoted, and I believe I stood alone at that time. And so in the spirit of consensus, I believe you're not alone with that vote. But when asked recently, how are you the proposed courthouse building, the construction of the one, I was emphatic in my lack of interest in building a new building. So hopefully that will clarify us. Any questions you might have, Mr. Fraser. I've not heard from a single constituent in my voting district who believes we should build a new courthouse. Not one. So.
Well, we can get in, do this all day. Maybe we should do it for a while. But have you read the requirements for, the security requirements for the state Supreme Court on courthouses?
Your question was whether or not the recent reporting in the Rappahannock News had quoted.
I'm asking you a question right now.
No, I'm not.
No, you're interrupting.
I answered a question. I'm not, I'm not going to.
I'm asking you, I asked you a separate question just now, sir. Have you studied the guidelines of the state Supreme Court for courthouses? That's a simple question. You can answer it yes or no.
Mr. Fraser, you're, you're not.
I asked you a question, sir.
Let him finish, Mr. Fraser.
I don't need to answer that question. I don't owe you an answer to that question. You asked me, you asked me a question, and I very, very clearly articulated my position on the construction of the courthouse, okay?
But that needs to be based on information.
I don't work for you, Mr. Fraser.
I didn't say you did. But listen, you keep interrupting me when I asked you a simple yes or no question, sir.
All right, I think.
Why do you think that I am somehow beholden to answer your questions on this board? I'm not. I answered a question because you asked a broad question about recent.
All right, just forget it then. You don't know what you're talking about then. You just, you just explained that. Madam Chair, can I ask you the same question?
Please stop talking over top of him.
He started talking over me. I asked him a question. I'm asking you the same question. Have you studied the guidelines for the state Supreme Court requirements on courthouses?
I do have the requirements. I can't say that I've studied them.
All right, that's, that's an answer. Now, could I ask Mr. Carney that question?
Absolutely not. I have never seen them, and I don't think that studying them would qualify me to make some larger decision that maybe you're after.
No, you've already made a larger decision to not move forward on a new courthouse.
Have I?
That's according to the paper.
You didn't decide anything.
You know what we did a couple of months ago? We decided to take a direction. That's what we did. And we took that direction. We didn't allocate money.
Yes, we did.
We didn't say we were going to build anything. We took a direction. To Mr. Whitson's point, we and I have not discussed this other than right now. But I have not heard back from a single person in my district, and I've talked to a lot, that wants what they saw and have read about. Now, that does not mean that there's two paths, you know, build onto the back of this one or build a huge new building. There's areas in between. And that's what I said in the paper, and I was very accurately quoted.
Could you explain, explain that to us then?
In terms of?
What that means, what you just said. Because you and Ms. Donahue basically had very similar quotes in the newspaper about building some, something.
I think that we could probably, I could see a scenario where we could do something like Madison and Nelson, where we built a smaller building. Connect them. I mean, there's a lot out there. But this should be a productive conversation as opposed to a gotcha conversation.
No, no, no. I'm just.
Well, I think I felt like it was a gotcha conversation when I read quotes in the newspaper that contradicted board direction instead of discussing it as a board. And I, I am very worried for this county that the judges may be reading our newspapers and think that we are not taking seriously the concerns about their security and the future of our courthouse. If I, if you had told me when I ran for supervisor that this would be something that I would be working on, I would have been in disbelief. But it is, it is on the list. It is not a want. It is a need. Or I read Mr. Timberlake's article or letter to the editor, the judges cannot compel us to build a new courthouse. It is true. They cannot. But they can say, I will not be holding court in your courthouse anymore. And a lot of the localities around us are full up. They will not be. They will not be prioritizing Rappahannock County cases.
Right.
We have judges from Loudon coming to us. I think it would be a serious disservice to the people of Rappahannock County if we weren't dutifully planning ways to continue courthouse functions for our county.
I feel as though that's what we're doing. I just don't think it's by now. So I agree with you, and I said that in the paper, and they accurately quoted me that my concern is to provide for courthouse functions and the constitutional officers that are associated with it. I totally agree with you. I just don't think that the only solution is either bump the back of this building out or build something huge over there. There, there's, there's areas in between, and that's the conversation.
Let us know what that is.
So I agree with you, so.
Let us know what that is.
I, I am not qualified to come up with that idea. There are professional services, there are groups of people professionally trained to do this. I am not qualified to do that.
But we just paid for that.
We paid for one look at something at the direction of the building committee. And what I think, after hearing back so much from so many people, it's like, whoa, what are you, this is...
How many of those people were qualified architects?
No, no, I'm saying...
No, I'm, I'm trying, I'm just trying to find a baseline for where y'all went, because the junction was we were, we were going to continue looking at building a, a new building down the hill on the four acres that was, this has been a plan for over 20 years by this Board of Supervisors. And now y'all want to deviate from that plan because of what new information?
Well, I don't quite see it that way. I don't see it that way. I agree that there is this four acre lot that we could do something with.
Well, everything has been done on the back of this building with that in mind that we were gonna build a new courthouse, because this, it's a, it's a numbers game, okay? You, you deal with numbers every day in your business and in your, in your life. Every one of us deals with numbers every day, all day, as part of our life.
Yeah.
Everything. Boiling an egg is a numbers game. It's a mathematical equation. So when the architects that we hired, that this board spent money on and, and told the building committee to continue on that path, they look at the state Supreme Court requirements for security. You've got separate entrances for the judges. You've got separate entrance for the accused. You, somehow you've got to keep the accused, the, the juries, the, the visitors, the, the witnesses, you've got to keep all those people somehow safely separated. And when you start looking at all those requirements, this building's not adequate.
I agree, so...
So then tell me what you came up with in the interim.
Well, I was, I, I think I've said it now twice, which is that I think there could be an interim, or a, a place in between. It's perhaps doing something with this building and connecting it to a smaller building. I mean, this is what they did down in Nelson, Madison's done this, I've seen, I've seen other ones.
Every, every site is site specific.
I'm just saying that when I get feedback from folks that says, hey, I hear it, and I say, okay, and that was part of doing the Lemonade and the Lawn, was to say, that's the whole point, is to get public feedback.
Right.
And it was great feedback.
But, but the feedback is not supposed to be about architectural or engineering matters.
We haven't got the architectural yet.
I know, so that's what I'm saying, is that I think what most people were freaked out by was what basically looks like a neo-colonial hotel on the back of this lot. And, you know, I, I'm just suggesting that, okay, I hear it. Why not explore some other options? Test drove that one car, let's test drive another one.
We're not into design at this time. I mean, that is one of our jobs as a supervisor, is education and description and letting people know where we're actually at in the, in the process. And the look of the building, and we all had this discussion, I think it's kind of human nature to still say, but I, to still think, but I saw it, was that the flying the balloon and putting down the footprint was not a marriage to a building of a certain look. It was a massing, that this will be the mass of the structure on the lot as it sits. And it was to inform what might be our perspective and the perspective of people throughout the county, people of the town, leadership of the town, as to what they might expect should a building be put on that lot. I thought that based on what we had seen, as a building committee member, I expected our, our next step would really be to, to check the makeup of the, of the ground throughout that part of the courthouse complex and see what may or may not be viable for building, because that will dictate to some extent what we do as well. This is, this is a sort of a self-informing process, and we may have some big ideas about what we do or don't want, but that doesn't mean that what we want is going to be possible. The other thing I would say to folks that say, add on to this building, add on to this building, add on to this building, we, we went down that rabbit hole once, and I think we spent three or six months working on the design and bringing it back to the board.
It was two, at least two, two or three scenarios.
It was a very, I, I use this in the scientific vein, inelegant design. It was straight up, you know, blew out the back of the courthouse. The utilities for the courthouse are not far off the back of this building. And the fact of the matter is, when we open up this courthouse, it will be very disruptive. There will be no way to hold court. It may affect all of the constitutional officers at different times as well. So the question is, how much disruption are you willing to put up with? How long are you willing to have the courthouse shut down? And what will happen to all of those functions if we lose that functionality for a prolonged period of time? One of the beauties of a new structure to me has always been, there's minimal loss of function, because as a small county, I think that we are always at risk of losing some functions. We don't have a magistrate anymore. We have a virtual magistrate. People hate that. They want to talk to a person. I want to keep all the services we have in place. I want to do it with as little disruption as possible. I want to do it in a way that is respectful to the taxpayers of Rappahannock County. And everybody knows, I think I'm very sentimental about this campus. I want to do it in a way that honors the beauty and legacy of Rappahannock County. And I was disheartened to see that we lost some of my peers along the way.
I think, Mr., yeah. You're going to come up to the mic, please.
As I'm sure you know, I have a lot of design and engineering and architecture experience. And throughout that process, including aircraft carriers, you start with a set of criteria and general requirements. You all endorsed that in January of 2022. And if you had a chance to read the narrative, I itemized those. So if our answer, our solution, did not meet your requirements, did not meet your desires, then we need you to decide which of those criteria you no longer support. For example, is it all right with you to move court out of the county for some period of time? If you aren't supportive of that, court is not going to happen in this building ever again, because you cannot open up this building, redo it the way it needs to be done, without vacating it for some period of time. That's item number one. Item criteria number two, do you want to get out of the rented space that you're paying $30,000 a month for? You said you did. If you don't, then that adds to the space you need for the county, all right? Add that to, the, the, the court requirements do not allow you to hold this meeting, the planning commission meeting, or the BZA meeting inside the courtroom anymore. And do you still want to move Mr. Curry and the admin back to the campus? If you add those three together, that's 10,000 square feet that doesn't exist around here. 10,000, that's half of that new building. The court functions, as laid out, doubles the size of the footprint that's needed for the court, another 10,000. So you, we came up with an option that is do one construction and isolate out every construction. But the point is this, which of these requirements do you no longer support? If you want to take these off the list, we can go look at other options, but I'll tell you right now, you're not going to find much of a better option if you don't take something off of that list. It's as simple as that. You can't put 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. I don't care how much you wanted to do it.
Thank you, Paige. I don't agree with that. I don't think that we're at that moment. I think that to close the doors and say, hey, if we don't do it exactly this way, it's not possible.
No, that's not what I said. I asked you to take off one of the require, any one of those requirements you don't believe. If you don't believe in any of those requirements anymore, then we can go back and look at it. But if you don't want to take those requirements off, you're going to get the same answer.
That, that, that's literally what I, okay, so maybe I'll rephrase it. So what I'm saying is that I agree with the, the, you're, you're talking about the bullet points on this sheet you gave us?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with them. I don't think we need to take them off. What I'm saying is that there could be another way of looking at this, utilizing the information that we have and doing it differently. This happens all the time when someone comes in and says, you have a piece of land, this is, this is what you can do with it. You have to get somebody else that's over here and then says, well, you could also do this. I just think we owe ourselves, and this, this is the biggest capital project Rappahannock has ever done, to just be, uh, to go outside and look at more options. So I don't think it's as simple as saying, well, if you don't want to do it the way that we've discussed, and you're right, we gave you direction to go, hey, let's go look at this, let's do this, go down that fork in the road.
No, but that's not what you're saying. Now you're saying, what you're saying is, we came up with an answer based on space requirements of 20,000 square feet.
Right, and I'm, I'm, I'm questioning the space requirement.
You agree, you agree, you agree the space, so you're questioning them?
I'm saying that when I asked you, like, I can't remember what it was, maybe last year, I said, where did the space study come from? And then you were like, oh, that's a good question, and then you kind of thought about it for a second. I can't remember what the answer was, but, but my point is, is not that it's wrong. My point is that we owe it to ourselves to maybe look at it again. I think that...
So you want to relook at what the space requirements are?
Sure, why not? Yes, absolutely, we can do that.
All right, so one of those space requirements is moving Mr. Curry and admin back to the, to the campus.
I'm just saying in terms of...
Is that one of them? Is that...
I'm not talking about the physical demand, like, the entities that need space studies. I'm not talking about that, the number of them. I'm talking about the square footage associated with the number of entities that need space.
Where, so, I'm, I'm, what I'm trying, what I don't understand is, where does 10,000 disappear?
Paige, you and I are not capable of making that decision. There are professional people who do this.
Yeah, right here.
I, I agree with you that I think that court needs to stay here. And I agree with you that new construction is cheaper than opening up old stuff.
Do you agree that we should get out of the Kramer Building?
Yeah, absolutely. So what I'm saying, and I...
Do you agree that Mr. Curry should come here?
All the bullet points, I totally agree with. What I'm saying is that we...
All right, so, wait, 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 a little bit.
I just think, I, I don't want you to finish, I'm not trying to interrupt. I just think we owe it to ourselves to continue digging through it. It's, it's like we do with the budget. It's just, we just got to keep, we come up to something, we say, okay. But where I probably won't land is, okay, if we don't do it this way, we can't do it.
I'm not asking for the solution. I'm, what I'm trying to say is, tell me where we cut 10,000 square feet out of county requirements.
That's, to me, not a discussion that I am informed to give you. I don't know.
I just, I informed you, we gave you the numbers.
No, that's not exhaustive.
That's not exhaustive?
No, not at all. That's not what we're here to do. Like, my point is, is that nothing's exhaustive. We could go through, we've done it, we could go through the budget a gazillion times and say, okay, where can we squeeze here, where can we squeeze here? I just think we owe it to ourselves to just keep going and to say, okay, you know, if we don't just have a huge standalone building that has the same square footage requirements that we've already come up with, is it possible to do it a little differently?
Such as?
That's not the discussion that I want to have right this moment. It's a broader discussion about where we go, not, let's talk about square footage of bathrooms. We don't need to do that in here. This doesn't need to be that kind of discussion. What I'm talking about is a broader discussion of just looking at more ideas. I've gotten so much feedback from folks, and, you know, I'm, I can't sit there and say to them, well, I know that we have done everything we possibly can, and there is absolutely no other option, because I 100% agree with you that we have to do everything we can for the judges, the witnesses, the attorneys, the, everybody that, that, that comes to court. We need to make a, a safe environment for everybody. We need to do that pretty quickly.
But right now, y'all need to come up with that plan because we don't know where that is.
And that's us, that's you as well, that's all of us.
But I've been working on this because this makes sense. What do y'all have that we don't have?
I don't have anything. I'm just saying that I think that we could probably even engage maybe a different architect, maybe just look at a second option.
Well, there's enough engineers in this room to tell you that what I'm going to tell you is correct, that if you've got enough money, you can make anything work. I was working at the U.S. Capitol when they went underground and put a, a virtual city underneath of there and then capped it off, but we don't have that kind of money. I, I was no longer down there when they started a $70 million project to renovate the, the dome that turned into a $700 million project. We don't have that kind of money. We've got to have an idea in place and work with it. And you apparently have an idea, but you're not telling us how to make it work.
No, I have a broad opinion that what we should do is just keep test driving cars. We don't need to buy the one that's right in front of us. It's that simple.
Well, I understand that. This, if, if I needed a truck, a box truck, I would not go buy a small compact truck with a four-foot bed.
Right, but you might not buy a Mercedes Sprinter. You might want to get a GMC. You might want to do something else.
But we have done all that unless...
Trailer.
Unless you think that we've missed something. And unless you can point to what we missed, I don't know where to start again.
I think you guys have done a fantastic job. I genuinely do. And I agree with you on so many points. There's nothing, there's no disrespect about that.
Then why are we here?
To come up with a new courthouse? I mean, what, seriously?
Why, why are we here?
Because we got to come up with a building, but we have to come up with the right one. And I think in terms of having a productive conversation, it's not like you guys messed up. That's not what's going on here. I just think that we should look at a different idea. It wouldn't kill us.
What is the different idea?
Well, like I was suggesting to you, I think that that, what if we had a space needs study by somebody else that said, well, actually, I think you guys could do this, this, and this, and this? And it shaved off, I don't know, overall, maybe 15%, maybe 20%. And they're like, well, if you think about it this way, and you do it this way, and you do it this way, that would be worthwhile. It'd be hugely worthwhile. And maybe it does, maybe, maybe at the end of the day, it is a standalone building. I, I'm just not committed to anything permanently like, oh, yeah, we're definitely doing a standalone building. I, I get it, I think it makes rational sense.
Where do we get this person or group of people to, to do it?
Well, I mean, there's lots of folks, Wiley Wilson, there's lots of folks that are like Wiley Wilson that do that.
I would just say, I, I think it's, if you're going to do something, it would be my preference to do something once and do it right. And I did want to just say that the newspaper article said something about to restore or not to restore. It has always been the intention of the building committee to restore our courthouse and to do so with the respect that it deserves. Part of me thinks that trying to cram all of the requirements for a modern courthouse into this historic building would do it a serious disservice and really mar its character. I, I think if you build once, you should build with future need in mind. And, you know, we're not, we might use some of the money we have in our account to pay for the building, but this is really a bond, an issue that we will take out debt service on. And it's like any other long-term purchase. You should do so with a look to the future and to plan not just for your needs, but somewhat for future needs. And if we do things and people have to come after us and do it again in 10, 15 years, we will, we will not have done a, a good job. And I, believe me, I'm a very thrifty person, and when we would sit down with Wiley Wilson, I'd say, well, can't we put this in the basement, or can't we do that? What's that empty space? And there's a lot of storage requirements for the, for the clerk's offices, things that, you know, we don't really think of in our day-to-day lives that take up a lot of space and need to be in a secure building. And I just think that, I would encourage everyone to go back to the documents that we've worked through, and if you have questions, I think we've all made a point to always be available to our peers on the board, because we know the material is dense and challenging, and we want to have a consensus that we are on the right track for the future needs of the people of Rappahannock County.
You seem to question, you seem to question the numbers that are in those space requirements. We did not just take what Wiley Wilson did, and they made a guess. That was based on the spaces that the current functions occupy with virtually nothing added. Then in addition to that, Doug and I went and... Then in addition to that, Doug and I went and interviewed every one of the office holders and really didn't find anything gross. If anything, they wanted less, alright? So from an existing office space, there is no increase in requirement unless you want to tell the building official, no, you get a smaller desk, alright? Or you want to tell the, the extension office, no, you can't have that conference room. Or you can tell Gary, whose staff is increasing, that his space requirements aren't adequate or too, or too extensive. I actually think Gary's staff is crammed in a closet, but we didn't increase their, their space. All the space came from not being able to use the courtroom for a conference room, moving Gary and the, and Admin and taking this off. It's simple numbers, as Ron said. It's not like there's something you can shave out of that ten thousand. Same goes for this courthouse, for the court functions. It adds up when you do those. You're, you might save a little bit, but it's not gonna change the addition that goes on the back, which by the way, we looked at a number of different options. Alright, we looked at one that, with Wiley Wilson, that connected the back of these buildings. And it took about a nanosecond to realize that was about as ugly as ugly can get. You would stand on Gay Street, you would look at these buildings and then just envision a gigantic brick wall behind it. And if you didn't like that, stand at Avon Hall and look at it the other direction. It looked like the Great Wall of China. We looked at those options. We threw that one out because it was so bad. Because it comes from the basic fact that whether you like it or not, you're roughly around twenty thousand, need for twenty thousand square feet. Where that comes from, there's many different options. You're right. And we looked at them and we presented them to you. And we're, that's, as Ron was trying to ask, we're desperately looking for, give us another idea. Do you want us to put it somewhere else in the county? I didn't think so, alright? The question, the question just comes back to, what do we do with, for roughly twenty thousand square feet? It's not like those are frivolous requirements that can be shaved. They aren't. That's, that's the prob, that's the problem, alright?
Mr. Whitson would like to speak when you guys are, Mr. Whitson would like to be heard as well.
So, that's, so I, I want to clarify that, yeah, maybe you can shave five percent off here, two percent off here, three percent off there, but when we're looking at this stage of concept design, we're one digit and the right number of zeros. That one digit is a two and four zeros behind it, alright? When we actually do the design with an architect, would it be seventeen thousand? Maybe. Alright, but we're, you haven't authorized us to go to that level of detail. You authorized us for a concept and that concept is roughly around twenty thousand square feet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, I want to echo Mr. Carney's comment. Really do appreciate all the work the building committee members have done. As I said in the article, Mr. Fraser and Miss Smith mentioned, I think you've really served as a useful tent tank. Think the concept you come up with, um, to be blunt, has landed with the Dalton, the constituents among my constituents. As the extent that I represent them, it's hard for me to, um, to not pause and say, what, what other options do we have? When, um, there's virtually no public support, um, for at least the implementation of this concept of the, of the new building out back. Uh, I will mention that Chair Donahue, I mean, we went on a field trip to Nelson County and, um, that, that time spent in Nelson County with Supervisor Rutherford and County Administrator, at least informed me, um, that like a lot of things in little Rappahannock County, sometimes we get wrapped up, um, in our own business and think that there's no other way to accomplish something than starting, starting from scratch. And I, I learned in Nelson County for starters, and I tend to do other field trips to other historic courthouse complexes in commonwealth, what I learned is that we really probably don't need to reinvent the wheel. And what you have there is a very tight property, um, that has been developed over the decades. And it's got a circuit courtroom in the, in the old courthouse, it's got a travisus courtroom that's new, and it's kind of administration all in one complex, and it does not look terrible. And I think to Mr. Carney's point, second thing I'd like to echo, is because really we don't have to reinvent the wheel and because there are people out there who do this for a living, we at least owe it to our constituents who, I would say, with the exception of only a few, who said, look, what's been proposed as a concept just doesn't seem right. I mean, we owe it to them, um, to at least think about our other options going forward. And I appreciate all the discussion about space needs, et cetera, but, um, I, I frankly, you could beat me over that and say things are absolute, but I, I'm just not gonna find that. And whatever Mr. Fraser's saying is, you know, because we are, because I or Mr. Carney or Miss Donahue have not studied, um, you know, courthouse security regulations and requirements, and somehow we don't know what we're talking about. And I don't appreciate that at all. What I, what I do appreciate are the opinions of my constituents I represent. And when I hear over and over again that this, this concept, uh, doesn't feel right, I take that seriously. And obviously, not to take anything away from the hard work of the building committee, I just want to echo Mr. Carney's comments that we need to be open-minded about this. It's a good deal. And I don't think it's going to, um, help anyone if we just get beaten into submission because, um, a few people are telling us that this is the only option. I just don't buy it. And Nelson County and their experience with the courthouse complex, inform me, at least sufficiently, that, um, that there are other, there are other ways to accommodate, uh, modern courthouse security requirements. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
I've heard just now from, from both you, uh, Mr. Whitson and Mr. Carney, that there are professionals that do this for a living or people that do this for a living. We worked with an architect that does it for a living, so I don't know where that comment comes from, but, uh, you know, I, I don't know, this is just-
I, I meant the space needs study. I wasn't talking about the architect. I mean, I-
Well, the, the space needs study, the building design, the, the security measures that are required, everything has been done with a professional that does it for a living.
Who did the space needs study?
The space needs study was done by our committee that presented those numbers to the architect and he puts it all together.
Right.
About the only thing that you can do, like Paige was saying, about the only thing that you can do is, is try and figure out whether the clerk and, and Mr. Golf's staff don't share the same bathroom or something to that. I don't know where you're gonna get this square footage, but one thing that we, we haven't even touched on today, where does this board and the planning commission and BZA meet if you try to reuse this courtroom?
Well, I don't think we should. I think that we should just get a second opinion. That's what, that's basically all I'm saying. I just think, I agree with what you guys are saying. I just think we should just continue exploring the options. I don't, I don't think it's a dead end. I don't think it's like, oh, we either did this or we're done. I just, I think that we-
Get a second opinion from who?
I, Gary wants to-
Well, so, I'm just trying to track here. So, there's a lot of discussion, obviously, um, perhaps the board should have a work session on this, um, have the building committee members there and strategize on ways that you can develop more confidence in what was done already or a pathway to get, uh, verifying opinions or altering opinions as the case may come to be. And if that means a different design professional, then you go through an RFP process to identify a different design professional who can prove to, uh, the board that they are the, um, the best people ever at deciding on how to handle this sort of project. And then you, you leverage that contract to help answer your questions and help guide you and the community to determine what is the, the best end game for here, um, this unique Rappahannock County.
I just have to point out that the building, I mean, I'm sure we've all been open books and we'll be happy to engage as much as you all would like, but I, I do just want to point out that the building committee has made a point to come to the board of supervisors and report and take direction, I would say, on a quarterly basis for the last two years to make sure that, um, we all have been in step.
And that we wouldn't wind up here.
That we wouldn't be out on a ledge, uh, all by ourselves. And I, that's where we found ourselves, uh, last week.
Well, I don't, I don't really think so. Like, what, what I should say is that, and I, I can, we'll continue to say this. The work that you all have done has been fantastic. And I'm not saying that we are not gonna end up in a similar spot.
But you don't want to accept any of it.
I don't want to accept any, I'll just, let me just, my point is, is that we should continue to explore options. And I think it's worthwhile, as Gary pointed out, it might be an RFP, but I think that if we got a, a professional space study done, which could be interesting, it would not be cold comfort to know that it either reinforces our current space study needs or it informs it that they're, they could be different. This is not about throwing out what you guys have done. On the contrary, it's about reinforcing and looking at other options if they're there. This is the biggest project we've ever done.
Can I, can I ask the one question?
Sure, sure.
Cause both, Mr., oh. Both you and Mr. Whitson stated that you had heard from your constituents and not one had agreed with the, with the design. When you had that conversation, did you ask them if they had read or done their homework on all the work the building committee has put online? In other words, when, so, when I have peo-, wait, let me finish. When I have people confront, like when we did at the, at the stakeout.
Lemonade on the lawn, stakeout doesn't sound right.
Yeah. For example, to name, to name names, Bill Fletcher walked up and started chewing my butt like you wouldn't believe. And once I explained to him the stuff he had not read, the stuff that was going on, all of a sudden, he turned around. Alright, so the, the question I have is, when you get these comments from constituents, please put them in perspective and ask them if they have reviewed the work to date. Cause what I've found is virtually no one has that's against it, alright? So you're, you're shooting, you're, you're getting comments from people that haven't informed themselves, alright? Which is leading you to an uninformed decision.
I'm not, I, Paige, I-
That's, that was my point, alright?
Paige, I, I, I agree with you. I do that to a lot of folks. I think ninety-eight percent of people who come, don't know the history, you're right. Um, I do tell them. They do say things like, what's wrong with the current one? It's fine. We don't need to do anything.
Right.
The assumption that I'm coming up with misinformed information though, I, I don't agree with. I, I think that it is not cold comfort to just have a second opinion.
I'm not, it's, I'm, you can get all the second opinions you want. You're gonna end up in the same place, but that's fine.
If we are, then that's awesome.
That's fine. That's fine. If that's where you want to go, then I agree with what Mr. Curry said, alright? Let's have a working session and decide how to proceed because doing this like this ain't being very productive.
Well, I think you guys have been productive.
Now, if I can, both you and Mr. Whitson and, and probably Chair Donahue, I don't put words in her mouth, but she's probably got some feedback from her constituents. But the problem is, sometimes, and, and it's good to try and work with our constituents and do what they want as a, as a whole, but we're putting a, a certain level of emotion in, into that. And I don't want to put the judge or Commonwealth attorney on the spot, but when the judges look at what their requirements are to hold court in Rappahannock County, they're not gonna look at our constituents. They're not gonna listen to those constituents. They're gonna look at what they need and only that. Am I correct? Judge, without putting you on the spot? They're, they're not gonna look at what our constituents think is just a little bit too big or a little bit too costly. It is what it is. Of course, we can spend too much money on something. But I don't think that we've, we've recommended any such thing. We've tried, the, I haven't been the one to sit down and tell the Commonwealth attorney that I think he's asking for too much space. I'm relying on him to tell us what they need in that building.
Yeah, let me be clear. I have absolute, Paige, you're, to your point, I've defended you guys. People are like, what is going on with that building committee? They want to spend way too much money. And I'm like, whoa, whoa, whoa. There are things we need to do and we needed to do them a while ago. I'm with you. I just think that it wouldn't hurt us to continue exploring some options together.
But we don't know what those options are.
I just, well, we, we-
And I, and I do think that that points to what, what is at the core of a lot of this, is it is an historic challenge. It's a camp that's been kicked down the road for quite some time. Um, we're the people in charge now. We need to do better. And, um, that requires education of both ourselves and of people that are interested in the topic.
Madam Chairman? I'm not a member of the building committee, but may I, uh-
I hear you've been attending some meetings.
Give a few facts?
I think if the board is fine with that, I am.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I'm Jean Clements and I am a resident of the Wakefield District. I'm also a senior judge with the Court of Appeals, but I'm only here as a resident. I spent, um, twelve years as a juvenile court judge in this district and sat in this courthouse on a number of occasions. Two years as a circuit court judge in the circuit of this jurisdiction and sat in this courthouse a number of times. And I have love for this courthouse for that reason as well as being a resident. I think Judge Fleming, who is the, um, senior judge in this circuit at this time, has told the building committee certainly, and maybe the board, I'm not sure, uh, that he had only two criteria in mind. One was that the, the court could not be moved, um, from, from the site. And secondly, that any structure that was developed, be it attached somehow or freestanding somehow, uh, would not be an administrative building. It would only be a courthouse. But really what I wanted to say today is, as I listened to the discussion, there have been no stakeholders involved in this process. And by that I mean, as Mr. Fraser said, there is a Virginia guidelines for courthouses, very lengthy. But one of those guidelines would have said that there should have been a planning commission early on. And that planning commission should have involved a number of people who have had no meaningful input to this point. They are all of the judges, Judge Fleming, Judge Foster, Judge Cupp, on the committee, the clerks, uh, both of the circuit court and the combined district court, the Commonwealth attorney, the public defender, um, the sheriff. None of these people since August of twenty-one has given you any information or the building committee, any information, and they are not on your committees. And I think, uh, Judge Fleming, I spoke to him on Friday, is shocked that he has not been involved in this process. And he needs to be. Uh, they're currently doing some court renovation in Loudoun, the general district court building in the old jail. And as I understand it, that building is obsolete before the first person has moved into it. And the issue was collaboration. There are issues in Falkir. And one of the big issues in Falkir is security. And there has been little if any collaboration. I don't want that to happen in Rappahannock. So I think, a- and I certainly do not suggest or want the building committee or this board to go back to ground zero on this project because the security issue, which nobody wants to outline for fear that it would come to pass, uh, is just dire. And the space needs are dire. So, thank you for letting me share that with you and I urge you, uh, to take this path. Don't, as, as I think Judge Fleming said, he's not a, a, a building person. He's the judge. You all are the building people and you all are not the judges. So there needs to be collaboration to solve some of these problems that you're discussing. Will it be standalone or will it- Or will it somehow be adjacent or affixed to? And those are big decisions, but they need to move forward. And I thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the board and the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I am very pleased to have her in my district because she's very knowledgeable and, um, we had some time the other day. And this is, I agree, I think a joint, um, work session will help considerably because you guys have done a ton of work. Um, and if we came to the building committee meetings, we would have heard about it, but I haven't. Um, so having the joint session, I think, makes good sense. I would like to understand, um, what we have to do for the judges because that's paramount. And I think there is a clock ticking. I don't know what that clock is, but I think that's extremely important. Um, and then if there's another ten thousand square feet, cause if I'm reading this correctly, it's like ten thousand for that and ten thousand for the other, um, space needs. Not sure if that's what I'm reading accurately. Um, but it seems to me the ten thousand for the courthouse and the judges, um, that building has to be done a specific way, uh, with all the right technology and everything else. Maybe we can look at the other ten and try to figure out how it worked in Nelson or Madison or Loudon for that, uh, matter, uh, to join it in some way adjacent to or, uh, attached to this old building so that I do hear from a lot of citizens that don't want to ruin the campus with a building that is just hu- very large. And I had heard the Comfort Inn comment as well. So, that's what I'm wondering if we could divide that into two.
I really hope when people are dismissive of the appearance of the building, that you all are stressing that we are not married to a design.
Absolutely.
That it is an evolving process.
Yep, yep.
Cause cheap shots are easy.
Oh, sure.
Doing the work is hard.
No, I agree.
So should we, um, try to schedule a work session? And maybe some of these key people we should invite?
Well, I thought, I did think that there were discussions with the judges, Gary, at different points.
Yeah, so there were interviews with the judges and that informed the preliminary concepts. The next stage that has been discussed with the architectural firm was design charrettes with everybody involved. Of course, we just haven't ma- made it to that.
You can't do a design charrette.
Clarification, sorry, one other clarification is yes, Wiley Wilson did not go through and interview the office holders. Doug and I did, we filled that hole. So they all have been contacted to share our, um, art.
Well, did, did interview the clerks and the judges. Did interview the clerks and the judges.
Yeah, so-
That's the, Wiley Wilson did.
Right, Wiley Wilson did. But, so, that collaboration was done at some level.
Sounds like maybe, um, there needs to be a bit more engagement past that first initial, uh, if I'm hearing correctly, input.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, quite frankly, uh, I think it's valuable for the judges and the clerks at all to be engaged. I think the board and the building committee might need to get on the same page before you bring all those outsiders into, uh, your, um, back and forth conversation over a table. If you can come to some comfort of what you know, what you don't know, what you are concerned that might not be a complete understanding before you engage all those other folks, I think that would be smart. Uh, you can do that with a big roomful, it just makes it a little bit harder.
True.
And if you think those people's perspectives are needed to form your thoughts and opinions going forward, excellent, but I think you kind of have to know where you are. Did you guys want to have a joint work session next meeting or in, in between? I think it should be in between, quite frankly, and, um, great if it wasn't in this setting, we could find a, you know, room where you can sit around.
Spread out.
The table, so, at the library or something.
Do we have access to the, uh, different, as they were, artist rendering type things that we had with, uh, our discussions with Wiley Wilson?
Oh, yeah, yeah, all the information, all the nine options.
We could pull-
Not all of them have three D renderings, but there were, I think, up to nine or ten options, uh, site plan type boxes on. We can pull all that together.
The twenty-first is a Monday. I don't believe we'll have a broadband authority meeting that day.
I'm not available.
Oh, that's right, you're back on the twenty-second?
Yeah.
So maybe...
Let's start meeting with the clearing, what day is that?
The twenty-second.
Okay. That's why it sounded familiar.
How does the twenty-fourth look? It's a Thursday.
Should work.
During the day or evening?
Uh, well, they're very well maybe court here, but we'd have to check the library.
I'm flexible day or evening, I don't know.
Uh, I think, unless you know date, time certain, it's going to be a cold meeting and you can, you can work that out.
Okay. So maybe if you want to talk to the building committee as well?
Uh, we've got, uh, a lot to go through. We probably ought to start early. Maybe send out for lunch type of thing because if we meet at five o'clock.
We'll be tired by nine.
We'll be hungry by seven.
Start with a full belly.
Yes.
We, we need to come out of that meeting prepared for a direction.
Okay, so date and time to be determined?
Uh, yes, we'll work on it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you want to adjourn your-
No, we still have a little bit of business.
Okay.
The building committee has went through the process of, sending out an RFP for a, um, historical architect. And we pretty much need, uh, this board's approval for the contract on that.
Right, so, but at the last building committee meeting, the, um, the RFP generated multiple proposals. The building committee reviewed those proposals to determine if they thought was the best fit. They, they did rank those offers and in negotiating with the top ranked offer, uh, decided to have that, basically asked me to participate and have that, um, architect come out and, um, kick the tires, if you will, so as to, um, be able to refine the remainder of the negotiation process. Uh, I've done that. I've entered a contract with that individual within the confines of my contracting authority. And, um, that scope of work will start in the next week or so. And we'll generate a report that'll be backed by the twenty-fifth. This is for the envelope project. So I would anticipate, based on that, final negotiations on the overall contract and then an ask for, a request for a word from the board. If you, if that tire kicking exercise gets us where we need to go, then you will ask for that at the next meeting, uh, but probably not this work session. But there may be a, if it's the twenty-fourth and his deadline is the twenty-fifth, you might be able to talk about that report at that meeting.
Yeah. That way we can start on some of this work outside of it.
So that was all an effort to really jumpstart the envelope. Let's get it going.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if there's anything else from the committee? Okay, I guess we'll entertain a motion for adjournment of the, uh, building committee.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
The ayes have it, we're adjourned.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you so much for your work here today.
Thank you.
And of course, leading up to the day.
Thank you, Dale. Thank you, Paige.
Perhaps the board would want to discuss schedule for the remainder of the meeting. I don't think you need an agenda. As you're aware, there are some weather, uh, some severe weather heading our way. Uh, storms in the valley right now, probably thirty minutes away or more. Uh, severe thunderstorm warning out there, so, um, it might, uh, might continue into the evening, so I think there are some decisions the board could have. As you're aware, your organizational resolution, uh, section fifteen speaks to when your regular meetings are going to be and also allows the chair to, um, postpone or, uh, continue. All are part of the meeting, that's a code of Virginia fifteen to fourteen sixteen, if it's hazardous to drive or, uh, for the board, um, to get there. So you might want to invoke that. That would, uh, delay or postpone portions of the meeting to, um, Wednesday, which is the kind of the automatic thing, there's court in this room tomorrow. You can reorgani- rearrange certain things on your agenda and get done today, certain things, and kick the rest over to Wednesday. Uh, you can try to wrap things up to a tidy point at the day session. Hope everything passes by and come back at seven and, uh, you know, if everything was good and storms passed by, then you just pick up where you left off and you keep moving on. Several options, but I think the time for decision making is now.
There's no court here Wednesday that you know of?
Uh, correct.
And we'd meet in the evening on Wednesday.
Well, you have several public hearings that were advertised for today and, uh, pursuant to that code section I referenced, uh, no further, um, aver- public hearing notices are required other than we need to notify the press as soon as we can. And of course, we would notify the applicants and Ms. Summers is engaged online, uh, would be able to do that. If there is remaining day session work, then, um, you would maybe set this to pick up at a particular time, um, Wednesday, uh, before seven. Or you'd have to handle it after seven, but I would strongly advise against that because it's a very hea- heavy agenda Saturday.
Yeah, I-
The evening agenda.
I've had a compressed day today, so I haven't had a chance to, to see what my schedule is for Wednesday, so you can't.
I'll be here. I can make it Wednesday.
Okay. I believe-
I can make it by phone, but I will be many stakes away.
It's coming Wednesday.
Yeah.
So the quorum is reliant on me and I don't know that I'm reliable.
Is Kir gonna be?
Um, Kir said he would be here in the evening. He could be on the phone during the day.
He'd be a physical quorum present. He can be here physically in the evening?
I, I can try, but I can't guarantee that.
Mr. Whitson?
I could, I, I could be there physically at seven o'clock.
Well, to Ms. Smith's earlier point, um, about the sign ordinance amendment discussion, I'm assuming that we'll be talking about that abundantly in the evening session. Is that something you guys want to tackle during this day session right now, or is that something you'd want to?
Hold off on.
Hold off on?
I'm fine to hold off on that and handle it in the evening on Wednesday.
Yeah, we'll talk about it in the evening.
And I think there will be ample public interest that it would be who wants to cover it at that time.
I agree with her.
It, um, I think the question is, we can get through most of the day stuff if we keep rolling.
Yeah, if you take the sign ordinance item off, I think we might be able to clear the deck for the most part.
I think so.
Uh, so can I make a motion to move it? Is that how we do this? And then we, we have to use this?
Uh, I think you would move it to be concurrent with the sign ordinance public hearing item, right?
So I'll make a motion to move it so that it's concurrent with the public hearing item of the sign ordinance.
Okay.
Well, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need to include that we're moving that to Wednesday or are you, Wednesday?
We don't know. It's, yeah, I think you're good there.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 No opposed, thank you.
I'll, I'll put more motion that we, um, we continue our, would this be, would this be an appropriate time we continue, I mean, we need to wait till we get closer to?
Yeah, let's, let's finish this stuff and then, uh, get to that point. And I think the chair needs to make that declaration based on the code of Virginia.
All right, uh, pole mounted speed display signs.
Okay, um, update here is that the application was submitted on the twenty-first of the month and, um, I don't have an update for when they will provide a response, but I checked back with them.
Thank you.
That's the application for the five locations we've been talking about.
Okay, thank you for staying on that.
Yep. Uh, refuse and recycling center?
Um, if board members haven't had an opportunity to look at this item, this is a follow-up to earlier requests from the board discussing relative to restricting use of the refuse and recycling, um, centers to Rappahannock County residents. Uh, we discussed the sticker type program and pass and share. Um, and so, uh, just developed a quick one pager for this item and get the board's general idea. Uh, the concept is that, um, uh, on a date certain, and this, uh, presupposes January one, twenty twenty-four, uh, we would no longer service out of county citizens or out of, non-citizens? Out of, people who aren't residents or citizens of Rappahannock County. And, but before we do that, we need to let them know. And, uh, so the process would essentially be to place large signs at the centers uh, to let them know that after January one, twenty twenty-four, the site will serve only Rappahannock County. The way I envision this to work is similar to how it's worked in a, my former locality. And that is by having a decal, uh, affixed to the exterior of, um, a windshield. Those are, um, pretty durable, pretty, um, sticky and sunproof stickers. I've had one on, uh, not that, but a sample on my vehicle for six or eight months. And it looks like the day I put it on there. Uh, the idea is that, uh, as people come to the centers over the next several months, they will then have to provide proof of residency. That's a power bill of something, so it's, it works for renters, it works for owners. Uh, but you have to have some proof of res- residency. So that's a power bill and a name, so you'd have an ID and a, a power bill or something. And then our, our attendants would have a list of all the addresses in the, in the county, uh, through our updated, uh, nine oh, nine oh one system. Um, all the range addresses for all the roads.
So a tax bill would be fine or whatever?
Uh, yeah, although-
Like if somebody owns, you know, twenty-five acres out here, they have nothing on it?
Yeah, 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 something, some, and, and so what I'm saying this, uh, one pager is that county administration needs to develop a policy because there are going to be some exceptions, uh, that need to be, uh, escalated from the standpoint, we're not going to have a site attendant having a debate onsite about whether some obscure form of information that can come to administration and we can work it out with them. Also, that policy would allow us to do things, uh, that the board has expressed in the past, like allow volunteer fire and rescue, um, members to have one of these. For example, if you, or belong to a, one of our local volunteer fire and rescue companies, but you don't happen to be a resident of the county, maybe you should be able to get one of these, uh, stickers as well. Uh, so that's the general process. I need to know now if there are any major objectives, objections, and we will charge for. Uh, and I said in the notes here, it's about a grand for the stickers and signs and things, not very expensive.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good work.
Yep.
Stickers look great.
They do.
Yeah, they look good.
Everybody's gonna want one.
Everybody's gonna want one, I agree.
Uh, and so this does get around the fact of some people have multiple cars and, you know, it doesn't matter. You come, like, put your stuff in your glove box. Um, this, this, uh, commercial activity and related matters, no stickers back?
Man.
Thought you were gonna get the key.
Eighties kid here.
Yes. Anybody have anything for new commercial activity and related matters?
I just noticed, or I've, I've heard a lot about the, uh, activities at Zara Main Street. And I just wanted, um, to let the rest of the board know that there will be a big construction project there at the former Deals Antiques, so, um, Sperryville Deals. So I would just, and I know that I've seen the site plan and it looks like things are in good order. It is a central intersection in the village and so, um, I, I do wonder if there's an opportunity to take a look at the parking and entrance and exit from that property?
Yeah, the, uh, B-Dot did review, uh, the entrance, I was able to confirm. Uh, it is located as far from the corner as possible. B-Dot does have corner clearance requirements. And what people will see is that the large building that is there now will be gone and much of it will be replaced with open area and parking.
Okay.
Uh, so the area closest to the main street will actually be open.
Good.
And the building will be-
To the back of the lot near the river?
Closest to the river.
Okay. That's what it looked like.
That property doesn't go all the way to the river, so it's, it stops short.
I just wanted to make sure that that was the way things were heading because with it already being a two-way stop that can be confusing for some drivers. I was worried about interjecting another stream of traffic in there.
View across that corner.
Good, that's very good news. And ample parking, it sounds like?
Uh, well, what they need, which is I think two or three spots, but- Mr. Graff just brought this in from his northern neck, so this was the other option, was a mere hang tag. Uh, the problem is that I can give this to my buddy in Culpeper- The problem is that I can give this to my buddy in Culpeper.
I like this sticker.
Can't put a sticker on.
Well, but I have taken stuff to the landfill for elderly people that didn't have a truck in, in their county, like in Falkir, just a couple, two weeks ago, I guess it was. And I, I thought maybe I'd be stopped, but they never asked me for anything.
Perfect, so those people can go to Falkir.
Yeah.
No, but I've been at our landfill site down there, the, you know, refuse transfer station, or whatever you want to call it, and I didn't know anybody there except Sergi.
I, I think we're going to see a significant drop-off at Amesville. I don't think there'll be any difference at all.
Probably right.
It's always if you're a county resident, you show up for the town with a race sticker, they won't let you stop there. So when you got to borrow your mom's car, you're in trouble, you're not taking.
That's right.
Leaving in your mom's car.
Mr. Whitson, anything for new commercial activity?
Yeah, a lot of activity in and around the town of Washington, but I think we're all aware of where it's headed in terms of pressure and all that, and I think that site, as it's built up, will certainly be more easy to navigate now that they got the, all the major excavation work done on it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, we move six new business Commonwealth's Attorney staffing and funding request.
I'll just kick this off real quickly for art. So narrative identifies Mr. Goff is about to lose a long-tenured employee to retirement. In that shakeup, that's the time to analyze what his office needs and doesn't need. He's made a proposal to fill that spot with two people. I've done the same in the past. That does have a cost that goes along with it for salaries and fringes. Recognizing the fact that the salary of the retiring employee is a little bit high compared to the lower-level employees, it all has been calculated out. With that preliminary input, Mr. Goff could provide additional information.
That's a heck of a horn.
Hark the herald angels, I don't know. Not me.
I'm not near a train station, I don't think.
Ms. Giles has been with our office since Peter Luke first got elected back in 1984. She'd started out there as a receptionist with Luke and Jimbock. And over these years, her duties have multiplied and morphed and become ever more demanding, to the extent to which I can't really describe. There's been a lot of change in the law, a lot of it's very complicated, what's required of this position. It's going to be very difficult, in my view, to ask a person to be a receptionist whose job is to answer the phone, most people then, collect the mail, and do more or less ministerial functions that don't require a whole lot of training or experience or education. And ask that person to also perform the duties of what now is a paralegal. The, since the Crawford case, just as an example, the notice requirements for certificates of analysis, laboratory certificates of analysis, notice to the defense is very complex, and it's on a differing scale for the type of, time scale, timeframe, I should say, for the different types of notices. That requires an in-depth knowledge of what's involved. There's been a huge increase in what are called DUID cases, driving while under the influence of drugs. So you have to be knowledgeable enough to make the call as to when a toxicologist is required to attend for that, just that case. And the numbers are ever rising, especially on the DUIDs. The cases can't be proven without the expert testimony. It's very important that upon intake of these cases, that also the correct cases be routed to the victim witness coordinator so that there can be a reach-out immediately. It's very important. Pat, as one individual, is totally overwhelmed with all these, all these particular duties. So I'm asking the board to authorize, I believe Bonnie told me it was, where's Bonnie?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven thousand, thank you Bonnie. And what I'm asking for is to hire a person at our lowest pay grade, county pay grade is proposed by Baker Tilly, and then a paralegal at a much higher salary in the 50,000's. Pat has, over the years, accumulated a lot of raises, so this board's already appropriated her current salary, which I believe is a little bit over 60. So by adding though, the new employee, even though it's a $15 an hour equivalency, with all the fringe benefits and withholding and so forth, that actually amounts to 47,000. I'm asking this because not only for my current operations, but going forward. I, I believe that at some point, the comp board is going to approve a position for an assistant Commonwealth attorney. We're one of the very few jurisdictions where I'm still a one-man show. And there needs to be a provision made for adequate secretarial and paralegal. It's just going to get ever and ever busier. In almost 12 years, since I've been here as the CA, I don't believe I've ever come to the board and asked for any kind of additional funding. We keep our budget as trimmed to the bone as possible. But I wanted to stress to you all that it's imperative, very, very important, for my operation to continue, and especially in doing, even though they're quote "just misdemeanors", just misdemeanors oftentimes involve more effort than a lot of felonies. So in order for us to continue doing that, it's really important for us to get the adequate staffing that we need. So I'm asking for this 47,000. I didn't really, I would have asked for it during the budget process. However, Ms. Giles hadn't made a decision. It was her decision to make as to when she was going to retire. So, you know, almost towards the end of your all's budget discussions, that's when she gave me notice, actually she gave me official notice about three weeks ago, written notice that she was going to retire, her official last day being September 29th. So I'm asking for, for the operations of my, my office, which I obviously won't always be here. I'll be retiring someday too. If we go ahead and put this in place, I think it'll be adequate for the foreseeable future until such time as the comp board would actually fund an assistant CA. So any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I'll just go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and advertise or go ahead and authorize this additional position and seek the supplemental appropriation, if it's available, and fund the position as required.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Is that adequate motion for what we're trying to accomplish today, Mr. Curry?
Supplemental appropriation of 47,000 and authorize the two positions, I think, covers it, that's what I heard.
I have a question that's not really related to, maybe, it's, it's like indirectly related, if I could ask. If you can hear me, I'm sorry. I just wonder, I know that, you know, you're looking at caseload and there's always the potential for increased caseload. Could, did you have any idea, just asking off the cuff, what the percentage of violators are from out-of-county versus county, whether it's misdemeanor or felony?
Yeah, I, I do have, and off the cuff, this is not scientific, I haven't gone through the court cases to make sure, but I think we're probably over 80% are out-of-town, are not residents of Rappahannock County, who are, who are violators, yes, quote violators. But of course, you know, a lot of our stats are also DUI, and so there's people that are having wrecks here or passing through. And there, off the top of my head, I can think of, in the last 10 DUI cases, maybe, maybe two were actually county residents that I can think of. So that's why I come up with that number. The serious felony stuff that's been going on, with the exception of the Leach case, those kids were from out-of-town, they're from Culpeper. They come up here and they, and they commit crimes. Unfortunately, we can't put little barricades across all our highways and say, you know, ask to see their, their papers, you know, before they come in.
Sometimes people get apprehended in Rappahannock County, you know, we've got to see it through, right?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of, I, I'm easy, Mr. Frazier, easy, easy 80% out-of-town.
Appreciate that, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, just.
No, no, that's fine, I've been asked that recently by several other people. And that's, to the best of my knowledge, what the numbers break down to.
I'm loath to press the board, but.
We've got some storms coming in.
Weather's coming.
Yep. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. I appreciate it.
I think there's only one matter left that I would really like to get addressed. And that is the Lantholiche storage tank project that went out to bid. Unfortunately, we only received one bid, did get contacted by some plant houses, so it was out there. That was Weaver Works out of Madison, and they did the other work at Amesville to move the compacters in. At any rate, your CIP budget for this project is $50,000, their bid is $88,300. However, I've negotiated with them over the weekend to pull some risk out of the project relative to the disposal of the Leach, the pond liner, which they really weren't sure how to price, and they priced it high because they were worried they didn't want to get caught short. So I agreed to work with them on that on a timing materials basis and work with our partners in Page County to get that down. It's only three tons of plastic, and I think that we'll be able to do it much cheaper. So what I'm asking for is authorization to award this contract to Weaver Works in the amount not to exceed the $88,300, with $80,300 being their lump sum and then time materials not to exceed that overall amount that they'll work with me on. Talking with Bonnie, would propose to transfer funds from the county Pago undesignated budget in the capital to supplement this, so that, to make up the difference. That's really a transfer within fund, doesn't require action of the board, but the award does. And so if I, if the board's of mind to get this done, then we could hopefully save $80,000 a year.
I'd make a motion that you go ahead and award the contract to Weaver Works, the amount not to exceed $80,300 a year.
Thank you.
$88,000?
$80,300.
Eighty-eight, three.
$80,300.
I need eighty-eight, three.
There you go.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and so there is a closed meeting, I suggest that you postpone that to your next regular meeting and not worry about that on Wednesday. Because, I don't know, if you want to do that after all the others, I would.
How does the, in our luck?
It looks like, we just had a severe thunderstorm warning in the northern part of the county, and it looks like the rain is approaching the ridge of the mountain. So now it's time to continue to some other time or.
Is the evening meeting also canceled?
We're getting there.
We're, we got to vote on it, but maybe we don't.
So are we, we are making, should I make a motion to continue this meeting, or?
I think.
Based on weather?
I think it was a motion to continue the meeting to Wednesday at 7:00 with the chair's guidance that the conditions will be hazardous this evening pursuant to Code Virginia 15-2, 14-16. None of the public hearings will have to be re-advertised, and we will notify the press more fully than we are doing right now. And Ms. Summers will be contacting all the applicants.
Well, you said that so well, Gary, I'd like to make that motion.
Can you repeat that?
I'll second.
See you Wednesday at 7:00, same time, same channel.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Who's the second?
I was second. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get home safely.